I live right across from Tyrell.
You're live, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, I've gotten the word that we are now on air and we're going to go ahead and call the meeting for the Pacoson Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting to order for Thursday, January 18, 2024. And at this time, we'd like to ask anyone who would so desire to do so to join us as we stand for the invocation, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the Lord God.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. We held a work session on December 4, 2023. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes for that work session as written? Motion to accept as written. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, take the roll. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hirsch.
I'm steaming.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schott.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Thank you, Thomas. And we now need a motion to accept the minutes for the regular session, December 4, 2023. Do I have a motion to accept those as they are written?
Motion to accept as written. Second?
I'll second it.
Thomas?
Vice Chair Schott.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the audience for visitors. The audience for visitors is where anyone can come to the podium, give their name and address, and address the Planning Commission on anything other than the public hearing item on the agenda tonight. So if anyone now has anything regarding any issue or topic they'd like to speak to the Planning Commission, this is your time to do it. And if we don't see anyone that wishes to come up, we'll go ahead and close the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearings. We have three tonight. The first one is Proposed Constrained Capital Improvements Plan, CCIP, for FY 2025 and beyond FY 2029. And we will have a little presentation.
(Inaudible) tonight also like to introduce, we have our chief here, as well as our school acquaintance, we've got Michael Ryan, we've got Chad Krajniewski, I always going to mess that up, thank you, and then John Anderson with Public Works, that's available for questions on any of the various projects that have been presented to you tonight. For our audience listening at home tonight, the document in which we're speaking of is available online. If you go to our website and scroll to the bottom in the middle, you'll see the document a PDF file that you're welcome to click on and review it. But Commissioners, I'm here if you have any questions or concerns as it relates to the document. If approved through a resolution tonight, we will present it to City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission at 6:30 this evening had a work session on this, so we are fairly familiar. We've had the document to look over and we're familiar with it. Does anyone have any further question on it? I'm going to close the, I mean, if you speak to any of these people, I guess.
If you want to, do you want to open the public hearing?
I've still got it open.
Okay.
And I just wondered if we should have the persons come up that are here, the heads, while we have it open, if they wish to come up and say anything before I close it. Nobody else wanted to speak, and okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close it then. All right, and we will go ahead and take it under consideration. All right, anybody have anything to say?
Nope. I've read it and looks right and self-explanatory.
Okay, all right, well.
I have a question or comment related to your question that you asked for a session about the replacement of vehicles. Would it be possible to offset the cost of the new vehicle with the sale of old instead of rolling that into another future project? That's what I heard was going to happen, right?
From what I understand, the answer was that it gets rolled up into the school's budget.
It'd make more sense to just use it to offset the purchase of the new vehicle instead?
Let me go ahead and answer. Unfortunately, we can't sell the vehicle until we receive the vehicle. So most times, I don't want none. We have to have the vehicle in place like our police vehicles. Right now, if you go and play us our police headquarters, we have about eight vehicles sitting out there right now. They have to be outfitted. So before we can sell the old police vehicles and take the equipment out, we need the new ones to be in play. So unfortunately, in order for that to work, we have to a lot of things to do around. So what happens is when the old vehicles get sold, we put it in the capital project fund balance, and we present new projects. So when you see the general fund support, those are the ability to give us that ability to purchase those assets at that time. Well, we didn't do good on that, but.
In short, it's not practical.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, do we have a motion to?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the Recommended Constrained Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2025 to beyond fiscal year 2029 as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schott.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, the second item we have for a public hearing is a request for an amendment to the master plan by Lamont Myers for the Legacy of Pacoson to amend the cottage parcel as shown on the original master plan from condominiums to fee simple, single-family lots with setbacks on approximately .617 of one acre of tax map parcel 27-01-00-0008 at the Legacy Development, zoned, PUD, mixed use. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on that, and I'm assuming we will have Thomas to present.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, I'm presenting what the chair just read, a request for an amendment to the master plan of Legacy of Pacoson. The request was advertised properly and adjacent letters were sent to the necessary property owners on December 28. About the request, the cottage homes within the Legacy Development were shown in the master plan applicant, application as multiple units on one parcel or condominium owned. They were not approved as fee simple, single-family lots, and the request now is to create single-family, fee simple lots within the cottage community as shown on the original master plan. I'll allow the developer at the appropriate time to expand a little more upon why they made the request, but I will give you the presentation as prepared. This is the, one of the schematic site plans of Legacy, and you can see that in that polygon, I'll say at the south side of it is a little red outline, and that was the original cottage parcel. There you can see 11 cottage footprints. They lost three lots for some stormwater and engineering reasons, but now have shown eight since the original master plan. This is actually the development plan that was approved in April of last year. You'll see the footprint of each cottage there, C1, C2, et cetera, the parking for those kind of on the sides of the street. Each spot will be dedicated to each cottage, two spots per cottage. This is a, a site plan, a development plan shot of the approved request, and unlike the approved development plan, you will see internal property lines to each cottage, therefore creating eight single-family, fee simple cottage parcels. The cottages originally in the master plan, because they were going to be on one lot, condominium owned, did not have setback requirements. There was no setbacks offered because they're going to be single, if the request is approved to become single-family lots, we asked for setbacks. The applicant is asking for five feet in the side and rear, and 10 feet in the front. On this particular plan, you see seven and a half feet in the front on, or excuse me, 10 feet in the rear on the south side of it, but the request is for five in the rear and five on the sides for, for all eight lots. And that you'll also see in the application package, a sheet that says Legacy of Pacoson setbacks, where they've added cottages to that with the setbacks of 10, five, and five. There were no elevations approved with the original master plans. By elevations, I mean what the houses would look like. They were conceptually described as being very small. They did condition they would be a minimum of 1,000 square feet, and that they would substantially comply with the architectural styles and building materials utilized in the single-family detached and townhome structures. That was found in their outline of proffers. Staff has had a chance to review the elevations. These are to be built by Sky Blue Homes, who is a custom home builder out of York County. Just for your viewing pleasure and, and the members of the public, these are the elevations of, of the cottages to be offered, obviously substantially conforming to what you find throughout the development. And I am here to answer any questions you may have. Most of the information I mentioned was in the application itself, but I'm, I'm happy to expand upon anything you may need more information about.
Are these two-story, are these two-story cottages, or?
They are two-story. There was no restriction on height or stories with the original master plan, but one thing we have worked on with the developer is that each model does offer downstairs living. There's a downstairs master, so it really can function as a, of one-story home.
And it's going to be approximately 1,000 square feet?
A minimum of 1,000 square feet.
Minimum, okay.
A minimum of 1,000 square feet.
Where's the parking?
If you look on, the development plan as approved, you can see there's two parking, I'll say bays, on either side of the street. One has about six spaces, the other the rest, and they will dedicate two spots per cottage once the homes are sold.
Maybe I'm misreading it, but I don't see that on the amendment request. Parking.
This is the parking as approved in the development plan. This is the parking that's actually been installed at the development.
So, so where is that on this amendment request that I'm looking at here?
They didn't show the, this is really more so of a recordation plot where they, obviously you're familiar with that, but they didn't show the, the parking bays on there. That's why I included this shot of the development plan as approved, that, that shows the parking spots.
I'm still confused. Yeah, but this, this is what was approved. This is the amendment.
This is what they're looking for is the amendment.
And I don't see the parking shown. I mean, will it be on-site? So that, those cutouts or those little parking areas are no longer there, or are they there?
They are there.
Well, how, how do they affect the lots that we're looking at here?
There, if, this is, what I'm showing you here is conceptual, that was submitted for the amendment request. The parking areas would be at the front portion of what you see as common area four, and then I would say, you know, to the right of where you see C8, where Cottage 8 would be at the, the bottom of Blue Crab Point.
Not shown here, it's actually part of this common area here. It's not open, is the rest of that open space, or what?
The rest of it will remain open, the, the rest of that portion of common area will remain open.
So will there be parking on-site?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name's Lamont Myers, I'm one of the managers of Big Woods Development Company. Ms. Gribble, yeah, there, there'll be parking, there's a parking pad on each of the cottage, there'll be on each of the cottage lots. If you go out there now, you could actually, everything's actually built right now.
Oh, okay.
All the, the streets in, the curb wipe downs for the, for the driveways are in, the actual, there's 16 parking spaces that'll be dedicated. Each unit will have two spaces dedicated specifically to them, but we also wanted to maintain the parking pad so people wouldn't have to carry groceries or anything like that.
Right, right, okay.
So there'll be two dedicated spaces plus the parking pad per unit.
Okay.
And they, and everything is built right now. You can go out and look at it and see exactly how it would be. Thomas, I don't want to, they, should I?
I think the question was answered, unless you all have any more questions?
Yeah, because I opened the, the, the public hearing anyway, so you can do that.
If there's any more questions of me, then I'll let the developer expand upon the application.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
Because I anticipated that he probably would want to sort of do a.
I'll be brief.
A little presentation. Okay, no, no, that's okay.
Go ahead.
No, that's fine.
I do want to thank Thomas and Wally, they've worked with us, you know, very hard on this, that we came up with a concept at first that really not everyone liked, and so we worked very hard to have, to work out a downstairs owner's suite at every unit. We're obviously appealing to a different, you know, it's a different product type, so it's a little, it's new to us, you know? We not, have never done these cottages before. So when these were first designed, I guess it's been like 10 years ago, we didn't really realize, I think, how much issue the, the whole condominium ownership. You know, here we have, in the, in the community, we've got 105 townhomes, I think we're about 230 single-family homes roughly now, and we were going to have these eight cottages that all by themselves were going to be stuck with this condominium association. And it's, there's a lot of cost and paperwork associated with creating a condo, you know, association. Plus, the way that it's been platted, and we would revive, we'd have, you know, dependent on, obviously, on council approval, but we would replat that, that particular section and create, you know, create those lots, because the way it's platted right now, even the cul-de-sac is, would be private. So here you have eight homes that would, they'd have to maintain their own homeowners association, they'd have to maintain the cul-de-sac, they'd have to have their own grounds maintenance contract, or have it maybe a subcontract. We have one grounds maintenance contract that does every, they do all the land, the landscape maintenance for the entire community, so even in, on the individual lots. That way, we want to ensure that everything is going to be maintained properly. So if, if they stayed as condominiums, you've got that additional layer of cost and, and then the other thing, they would have to have, they would have to be a sub-association member of the overall association, because not being individual lots, they don't qualify, they don't meet the term definition of being a lot under the declaration, homeowners declaration, the HOA declaration. So they would have to have a separate contractual agreement with the HOA to use the clubhouse, which is like right there. So we looked at it, and then, and then finally, we started talking, when we, then we started talking with individual builders, and we started talking with Barry and Sheila with Sky Blue Homes, and they're in our office, we do a lot of things with them, a very longstanding relationship, and we realized they wouldn't be able to buy and build, you know, one or two units at a time. They'd have to buy the whole thing, you know, and it's just, so the more we got into it, we just said, this is just, it's an awful lot to put on the builder, it's an awful lot to put on the homeowners, especially when the units themselves are going to look exactly like they're, like they were consumed, like they were planned. So the actual footprint doesn't change, the road's in, utilities are just about in, gas is in already, power's starting this week, everything else is, is in. So really, basically, that's the main thing, is that, you know, we, we wanted to create something special here, a different, unique product, and, you know, we were able, and I don't know, Barry and Sheila want to add anything to this, I mean, they went to a lot of time and expense to develop what we thought were very, very nice, very nice product. To answer your question, Mr. Stevens, I think they're typically about 1,600 square feet total.
1,450 is the smallest, and 1,650 and 1,780.
Good size.
Yeah, and, and they're all, they say they all have downstairs owner's suites with two bedrooms and a bath up, you know, so.
Lamont, am I to understand then that Blue Crab Point will be completely public?
Yes.
And the parking area will be under private?
Yes.
Right, so they will still need a sub-association?
Well, no.
No?
We'll just designate, the HOA will just, they'll just designate those spaces. Those are spaces were created specifically for the cottage.
Okay.
So they'll just be marked off.
So they will not have a separate HOA?
No.
Okay.
They'll be, see, by, by making them fee simple lots, they can just join the HOA like everyone else, which just makes it so much simpler.
Got you.
I think really, Ms., Madam Chairman, that's really the extent of my, you know, of my presentation, I don't want to.
Okay.
Pick up a lot of your time, but we're certainly, we're all here happy to answer your questions.
Y'all, y'all are making great progress out there. What is the build-out? How much of Legacy is indeed built out? I, I mean, every time I come by there, you see a hustle and bustle there. What is the, I mean, how, how is it coming along? I have not ridden back in there.
Oh, it's been marvelous. I mean, really, we're so happy with, with the sales, with the pace of sales. In terms of total, I mean, you take the apartments out, because those are all being built as one, but if you take the total, the single-family units and the townhomes together, we're probably about a third of the way through.
Okay.
In like a year and a half, so 15 months, so it's really been very gratifying to see the market accept it.
Thank you.
And we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody else before he sits down?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else wish to come to the podium and?
Madam Chairman, I have a couple of questions, but they may be directed towards the development itself.
Okay, well, come on up and.
Good evening, my name's Trace Hall, I live in Woods of Tab, I live on 100 Trace Trail. So our property line pretty much runs the length of those last one, two, three, four condos there on the end. Is my understanding that what was proposed earlier is that the 10-foot setback that's listed on the amended request diagram there is going to be reduced down to seven? Is that what was stated?
It'll be five.
In the rear, okay, so down to five at the rear. And I guess my follow-up question is, is there any plans for a fence or delineation line? Because five feet is, is too large step to that point, and then it's on to the woods behind my house, that sort of thing. And that is sort of the thinnest part, essentially right, right into my backyard from there. So it's really the question is, if the houses are moving closer to the property line, is there any plan for a delineation, or some way to note this little strip of grass at the end of your property at that point?
Okay, and I'm, I'm thinking maybe like to come to the podium and answer that if you.
To answer Trace's question, though, we've not discussed fencing at this point, that doesn't mean, you know, we can't, but I would have to defer to the builder on that, as to, you know, we don't, typically, we, we as developers don't install fencing, the builders put that on the lot, so I'm not sure if that's something. I do want to maybe clarify one thing, Trace, we were asking, it shows 10 feet, the actual structures themselves fit as designed, fit within those footprints. We thought it'd be nice to have that little flexibility in case you would have put, add on a quarter or something, or, or a place maybe to, to store a bicycle or something like that. So the actual footprints of the units that you saw, they do all fit within the building footprint showed, and we just thought it would be nice to have that flexibility.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and we will close the public hearing on this particular item, and the Planning Commission will discuss this.
So what's the discussion?
Anybody have any comments?
Personally, I prefer fee simple. I think it's a better product for the property owner as well as for the builders and developers. But I understand his concern regarding the five feet, I mean, that's, five feet's five feet, I mean, you know, is there some, you know, planning, some kind of type of planting that could delineate this property line, the property lines up against Woods of Tab, or has that been considered?
Right now, the lots are clear.
Right.
So tree line.
Lamont, can you come to the mic, please?
Yeah, right now, the property, the property's cleared, and there are woods behind us. I don't know, Trace, is, are the woods behind us, is that your lot? Or is it above?
There's, there's like buffers and more than an additional seven to 10 feet, and then is my property lawn, it's a very skinny strip that runs through there. Right now, the only delineation is the construction fence, which is chicken wire and, and orange plastic.
Right.
But it would be, it would just be the clear line, would be where the property would be. So you can tell, right, you can go out there now and actually see where the lot is, where it is.
I think a while back, we approved the buffer zones, and they were supposed to be roughly 10 feet with so many trees of so many heights and this and that. I mean, it was quite explicit as to what type of planting was required as a boundary for the legacy, so I'm assuming that that's still the case.
Apparently not.
This, this is not one of the areas of the development where there was a landscape, a required landscape buffer, and that was approved in one of the previous iterations of this by City Council.
It didn't cover the.
There is no, there is no buffer between these cottages, no required buffer, landscaped or otherwise, between the cottages and where you see New York County line, the Woods of Tab.
What kind of restrictions are there for the property owners who purchase these fences?
There, there's no requirement, there's no.
There's no restriction?
There, there.
If I buy one of those, I can put up a fence?
There, there's some fencing guidance in, in the guideline, the guidelines and the guidance documents of Legacy that speaks to fencing for these homes where they would not be rear-loaded homes. I think it says they could, they can put up a six-foot fence, six-foot white vinyl, I think, is what would be approved in the rear of these homes. So, you know, either the homeowner would have that option, or the builder, but there are fence guidelines for Legacy.
Builders be agreeable? I mean, you're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, four, six, two, less than 250 feet of, of fencing to run a white vinyl fence just to delineate?
If, if I may.
Sure.
I don't think it's a, a bad idea, and we do have the developer and builder here. I might suggest that if I'm hearing correctly, you add a condition to the approval recommendation, that a fence consistent with the fence guidelines is erected by the builder or developer at the time of construction at the rear of those lots adjacent to the Woods of Tab. I'm not sure if that's something they would be amenable to, but it is, I think, a solution to the problem. to the problem.
Not a lot.
Just, just fencing in the rear consistent with the fencing requirements of the development, I think, would be sufficient.
But, well, we, we've spoken with, with the builder, and they think that, you know, they would be okay with that.
Okay.
That would be good.
And then, when individuals, when individuals come in and want to do their own fencing, they have to submit an application through the homeowners' association, and it comes to us, so actually Buddy and I as the board of directors.
They would just attach to the rear, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's, and there's always, you, you have an easement to attach to the fence or the neighbor's fence, so that could certainly be done if people wanted to enclose their little backyard for an attach or something.
Right, exactly, okay.
Sounds like a good.
That would solve that issue.
Yeah, that's good.
Madam Chair, if I may, I did, I think I did look over some of the conditions you'll see in the approval resolution, just because they're consistent with the master plan amendments you've seen before. There are currently three that will be familiar to you and the developer, and that, the first being granting of this master plan amendment will necessitate a development, a plan, amendment for all applicable development plans and association record plots, we know that, we've done that with every amendment. The second is that all other requirements of city code and the approved master plan as amended shall be followed. The third is that all applicable federal and state regulations shall be complied with. So if you want to attach that fencing condition, we'll add it as a fourth.
Mm-hmm, that'd be great.
You know, and the verbiage, if you all will include in the motion, would be appreciated.
Hopefully, that will be a, a, a good thing for you.
How tall is the fence going to be?
Six foot is the maximum that's allowed under.
That's excellent, I just, just wanted to make sure.
Only thing I see.
Would you like to make a?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Exactly how to state this, that a rear fence line be established across the rear property line of lots C3, C8, to delineate a boundary line between there and Woods of Tab.
And that we accept the.
That we accept other, and accept the rest of the conditions.
As written.
As written.
Written, okay. And a second on that?
A second.
Thomas, if you take the vote on that?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schott?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, and the next public hearing is a request for an amendment to the master plan by Lamont Myers for the legacy of Pecosin to amend the colors, or color or colors on the clubhouse as shown on the master plan at the Legacy Development Zone, PUD, Michigan. So I guess Thomas will go, will let you also debate that, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Yes. Let me get to that. Having some technical difficulties.
Well, not let me download it, I'm going to go to the documents I sent you all, and All right. There it is. Sorry about that. All right, this request is again by Lamont Myers, he's the developer of, one of the developers of Legacy of Pecosin, and this is to amend the colors on the clubhouse, the clubhouse for the townhouses and single-family homes as shown on the master plan. It was properly advertised and adjacent letters were sent. The clubhouse at Legacy was shown with the master plan in 2015, it was originally shown as red, red brick with white siding on the gables. We as staff later approved a different elevation that showed basically the same clubhouse, but showed the red brick whitewashed, we did that last year. The reason this is coming to you now is because both of those elevations, although approved by staff, neither showed a blue gable. A blue gable is what you'll find on the clubhouse as it sits. It, it was not approved as part of the original master plan for it to be blue, it was not approved by staff. This is, the request is written by the applicant, I won't read the whole thing, but the gist of it is that they're asking for your consideration of the blue gables instead of white, so that it matches some exterior furniture, and I'll allow the developer, or Mr. Spencer, to expand upon that if he wishes. I understand this is hard to see, you see the date on the document, 2015, this is what was submitted with the master plan, you can see the red brick there, columns on the front, and the gable, both gables you can see there, white siding. This was the elevation that we approved administratively last year, more or less the same clubhouse, but whitewashed brick, but still the gables were shown, white siding. This is what has been constructed at Legacy. All other elements of the clubhouse are as approved, it's moving along well, the pool is even installed, but we thought that this was just a little further out of what we could approve administratively, and is here for your consideration. This was provided by the applicant, you can see kind of why they're making this request, you can see some features of the pool there on the left, what, you know, the tiles are the steps, the bottom of the pool itself, the outdoor furniture, et cetera, and you can see some of the furniture and whatnot of the community activity area at the clubhouse. So that is before you, pretty simple request. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, if not, I'm sure Lamont or Mr. Spencer would, would be happy to answer.
Okay, Thomas, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, and if you would like to come up and comment on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Sheila Byers. Sheila, in addition to being with Sky Blue Homes, also does a lot of our, works with our decorators, too. We, we engage, an interior decorating firm that's doing all the models in the community, we felt that would give us some good consistency, and I'm not even allowed to pick out colors at home, so I'm not even going to even try, I'm going to turn it over to Sheila at this point.
Good evening, Madam Chair and commission members, I'm Sheila Byers, and I apologize for this happening. When I started to facilitate with the interior designers and we were going in a coastal direction, it really became so exciting. So from the front fountain, go in with all the blues, and then adding in the herring birds, and then coming to the fountain that's going to be in front of the clubhouse with the blue, and all the outside patio, all the umbrellas, everything is going to be in blue, and the interior, we've even got in the bathrooms, the white dividers in the bathrooms with blue and white wallpaper, a linen color stone coming down, a medium color floor with all blue furniture and stuff going in. So we just, I just got excited, and we thought, how do we tie all this together? Instead of doing the white, this was, it's called, the name is Pacific Blue by Norandex, the shakes, and it just went so well with all the colors, and I did not, and I apologize, that I did not know that it was supposed to be white. So I had it all put together, we finalized all the colors, and in all the excitement, and it's just so exciting to see how beautiful it's coming together, and going out there and helping pick the colors and being a part of it, and that's how it happened. So we just were trying to tie all the colors coming in, I noticed quite a few blue homes on the main road going in, but having that outside, and we don't have pictures of what they picked, but it's going to be really beautiful, and I'm nobody's planning a ribbon ceremony cutting, so we're hoping everybody will come, but inside, they've done a great job, and they have hired national, this group is a national group, it's a large group, and they've helped pick everything. So once the furniture was picked, is when we started picking all the colors, and that's when we went to the shakes on the outside to make sure, from every paint inside to the shakes, to the flooring, to the cabinets, to the countertops, to walls, to everything you can think of, even down to the mantle over the fireplace. But it was my fault, so that's why I'm here to explain why it happened, because I did, I did not know, and I should have probably looked first, but I just got so caught up in the excitement. So.
Uh-huh.
But it is beautiful, and the color is beautiful out there, doesn't show quite as pretty on this, you can see more of the blue in the middle picture than the end, but it is, it is a. And it does go with all the interior, it goes with the fountain, and it goes with the pool and all the other furnishings.
Is that front gable going to get the blue shakes as well?
Yes.
The one that's white now?
The blue in the front, oh, no, the other piece was designed, it's some type of a special finish, he's not doing this.
On top of the.
Yes, and that is all white, it's a, it's a, it's a white finish, and I don't think it's painted, I thought it was sheets up there, but forgot what it was.
Columns will be white?
Yes, so that, so just the blue of what you see, it'll tie in better when the columns go in.
Yeah.
The large columns go in. But that wasn't designed for shakes, yes, so that part has not been completed yet.
Thank you.
Sorry, she, apologies.
I have no problem with it.
Me neither, no problem with that.
I just have a question, I don't have a problem with it, is that these are the shake-type finish on the vinyl, then? I have the same thing on my house, it's high wind approved, so.
And it's the traditional style, so it's very old style tradition.
All right, we have a, do we have a motion?
Motion that we accept the amendment as written.
Second?
Second.
Tom?
Vice Chair Schott?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
That will go to the council on what date?
We likely, February 12th, I think is the date, the second Monday in February, both of these, and CCIP, well, are ready to go.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All righty, so with that done, we're finished with the public hearings, anything in communications and correspondence that we need to know about?
Nothing from me, other than I do want to mention again, for those who may be watching at home, that Karen Hunt has joined our team in replacing Sherri Coffey, and Karen will soon assume the role of Planning Commission Clerk, hope to retire that hat again. And I did mention it in work session, but happy birthday to Wally, that's it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Did very well, Thomas.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannella. I wanted to add just a few things, some of you may already know this, but this is Mr. Stevens' last, I believe, last Planning Commission.
I did not hear that.
He is not going to, he's, he's going into a well-deserved retirement, how about that? For the Planning Commission, we will, we will miss you, I will say that, you've been very valuable to the, to the commission, and hopefully we get somebody who can at least somewhat fill your shoes.
I had not gotten a word on that, that's news to me.
February. If not sooner.
We are with the zoning ordinance, I didn't pass you all with the zoning ordinance this time, because we met on it last time, I'm getting the attorney, Andy, to double-check, make sure we're okay with our violation fees with the state, and we're also still resident with short-term rentals, y'all may remember the case, it was withdrawn, they are renting for longer periods of time than, than short-term rentals, so they will not be coming back to the commission. But we need to figure out, one of the things pointed out, well, two things were pointed out at the last Planning Commission. Number one was how we as staff deal with them, and we've dealt with that now, we'll keep all the files back in our department, we will have to sign off on any kind of home business, whether it's just a computer or it's something that rises to the level of a conditional use permit, like a short-term rental. So we think we've got that handled well in the House. The second thing with short-term rentals is the Planning Commission expressed concern about, you know, can we get some direction on where they would be allowed, what zoning districts they would be allowed in, are we going to consider them in residential areas or just in commercial areas? That is a question that we are posing to the city council, I don't know when we'll hear back, but, but we are working on that one as well, and I think I've spoken with Andy a little bit about that earlier today. So anyway, onward and upward, we're just about ready to submit the zoning ordinance to, was it brought from the attorney, of course, I want administration to take a look at it as well, beat it into shape, although I've done a lot of meeting of it, the agitation alone was, was extremely time-consuming, but anyway, that's what we're here for. So we're moving ahead with that, and after we get the zoning ordinance done, assuming that happens, which I think it will, we will do the sign ordinance, and because of some of the stuff I've already proposed to move from the zoning ordinance into the sign ordinance, that should be, it'll be a simpler issue than, than tackling the entire zoning ordinance laws, I'll put it that way. Thomas has already mentioned Karen Hunt, but I would just like to, to say that we're glad to have her, and we're looking forward to great things, no pressure. That's all I got.
Big shoes.
Yeah.
Little, just happy birthday to Wally again, and wish everyone, wish everyone has a good new year, we're a little into the year already, but hope everybody's having a good one.
I have two things, or three, actually, happy birthday to Wally and welcome Karen, I hope you, glad you're here. A second, or, that's my two, but the third thing, I want to thank the city for allowing me to attend Certified Planning Commissioner's School through VCU, I really enjoyed that, it was well worth, if you would like to consider that. it was well worth, if you would like to consider that, because as a new Planning Commissioner, I found it incredibly beneficial going forward in our role here, so I want to thank the city.
I also attended that four years ago, and it was very, very well done. Mr. Harrison?
Harrison, mine was actually virtual, so, and it was Mike Chandler who was the instructor, his last.
Yeah, Mike's good.
Yeah, he retired, so, yes.
Well, again, happy birthday, Wally, welcome again, that's all I have.
You do look a year older, by the way.
I feel it. I feel like you're older. My son turns eighteen tomorrow, so, yeah.
Thomas, did you want to say anything?
No, not really, I've enjoyed the four years on the Commission, and it's a lot of work, but it's good to be part of the community. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say, we have really appreciated you.
Thank you.
Been valuable to the Commission, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Yes.
Yeah, and of course, I'll repeat, hope you have many more happy birthdays.
Thank you.
All right, and I don't think I have anything else to say, I'm going to turn the meeting, and we'll, do you think we'll have one next, next month? Have you got anything, Scotty?
We don't, don't have...